Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City but North Committee of the whole meeting. Today is Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. It's five o'clock P. M. We do have a presentation on our agenda, then some operational and consent agenda items. So let's get started with our presentation from our city engineer Brent Warlock, who's joined by our Director of Finance, Jason Schat. Gentlemen, thank you very much. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I've got three items up here. Jason's got one. Would you have any issue if he went and did his public hearing presentation and all mine kind of run?
Whoever organizes these agendas has got to get this stuff figured out. I don't know. That's that whole committee.
That would be Michelle, Your Honor.
I did it in order of how I.
Yeah, we usually do presentations, but I don't care if that's okay with you. Jason, do you want to go first on operational items seven and eight?
I was really hoping for a couple more minutes to prepare, but.
I think you're gonna be fine.
Thank you, Your Honor. As with every year, we have the opportunity in May to amend the budget to kind of reflect where we think the final budget for the year ended June thirtieth will be. That requires a public hearing, which we will hold tomorrow night. The purpose of the budget amendment is for permit appropriation of expenditures of unexpended fund balance, maybe some revenue outside of property taxes. Obviously, we can't change how much tax we've levied for the year to permit some transfers between funds and transfers between programs within the general. And that's basically what we've shared with you throughout the year. You'll remember the budget was adopted in April of twenty twenty-three, so we're talking about over a year ago. And a lot has changed over the course of that year, so we're just kind of catching the the official budget document up with work that you have all approved as the year has progressed. Significant events that happened over the course of F Y twenty-three, twenty-four and impact the budget, obviously, we have the recognition and expenditure of ARPA funding. The way that federal funding works is we can't actually recognize the revenue until we spend it. And we've spent that on the landing project over the past several months. So we will be recognizing both the revenue and the expenditure of those funds. Thanks, Jeff.
Here in this fiscal year. That had previously been budgeted a year ago. We were awarded the Safer Grant that increased both revenue and expenditures. We'll have a little bit of revenue and expenditure toward the Safer Grant because the pre-year, what's the word chief, the period for?
Your performance period?
Performance period began in the middle of March. We had the landing project and related revenue. That was not a part of the original budget. And with all the different grant revenues coming in to support that project, that has impacted the budget. The Forest Grove Road and Middle Road Project is expenditures carried over from F Y twenty-three to twenty-four. So that's impacted the budget beyond what was amended or adopted. The sports complex expansion had some carryover grant monies that were paid out to those developers. Originally planned in F Y twenty-three, those payments didn't take place till F Y twenty-four. So we're taking care of that in the amended budget. And over the course of the year, and we will continue to improve this, we're kind of attacking how we account for and bill back our I T services. The I T fund is an internal service fund. All the costs of that fund are then exploded out to all the departments to pay their fair share. We've changed that methodology a little bit. We're pulling software purchases away from departments and into I T and then billing them back. So overall, the budget would not have changed in total, but you'll see it's gone up or down in certain places as we reallocate those costs to the departments a little bit differently. Here's a table of revenue changes. I remind you that our amended, our amendment is a change to the original budget, not the estimated budget that we talked a lot about in January and February with the adoption of the F Y twenty-five budget. I'll kind of ignore the numbers a little bit and talk more about the reasons for the change as we work our way down here on revenue. Property taxes, just a minor tweak, reduce collections of delinquent taxes, which is probably a good thing because it probably means people are paying their taxes on time. Tiff revenue, no change. Other city taxes is increasing a little bit over a million dollars, and that's due to the, an increase in both hotel motel tax and the local option sales tax over and above what we adopted in the original budget. Licenses and permits, again, a little bit of an increase in building permit revenue. Use of money, almost a two million dollar increase, mainly and largely due to higher interest rates on investments. The interest rate market is much different than it was when we adopted the budget over a year ago. Intergovernmental revenue is up about eight million dollars. Part of that is that recognition of five million dollars of ARPA, five and a half million dollars of our funds. Part of it is the addition of Safer Grant, and then the rest is just due to the timing of federal and state-funded projects like Forest Grove and Middle Road, where some of those expenditures from twenty-three carried over to twenty-four, and that revenue followed. In the charges for service area, we see about one point one million dollar increase. Some of that, a minor amount, rec fees, a little bit at Palmer Hills. A lot of it is that change to the I T methodology. So the departments pay the internal service fund through a charge for service, so that line item has increased as we've exploded those charges out. Special assessments is down a touch. Miscellaneous revenue is down two point seven million. This is due to the fact that the C P rail settlement, which we had budgeted to receive in the current year, was actually received last year in F Y twenty-three, right at the end of the year. And other financing sources were up about four million dollars. That's due to the larger-than-we- had-planned bond sale. And then I'll talk about transfers in and transfers out here in a couple slides. On the expenditure side of the ball, we report expenditures by service area to the state. Those are on the leftmost column on the way down. Starting with public safety, this includes police, fire, building inspection, and flood protection. Those costs are up about six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars over the original budget. Big changes here is obviously Safer Grant, some increases in P D training. And then it's also a factor of those I T charges. Now that software is being handled in the I T fund, and we can more accurately charge back those costs to the departments, the the public safety guys are picking up a little bit bigger part of that bill. You would then see a similar reduction somewhere else in the budget. In public works, we're up just about sixty-eight thousand dollars, and really, this is just a reallocation of some engineering, internal engineering fees and salaries to the road use fund. Culture and Recs actually down almost a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Our original budget contemplated some higher part-time seasonal costs than we've experienced so far this year. In community and economic development, here we're up three million. This is that economic development grant paid to the T B K expansion developers as that project has been completed. Again, that was originally budgeted for F Y twenty-three, carried over to F Y twenty-four, so that's why it was not in the original F Y twenty-four budget. General government, we have the reallocation of those I T charges, some increased liability insurance costs. We added cyber insurance this year. We added a construction policy for the landing project that increased some of those liability insurance costs. In debt service, we are up about three hundred thousand dollars. We did the larger-than-planned bond sale. And there's also some new accounting rules around how leases are accounted for. Leases are not operating costs as they had been in the past, so we're accounting for those as a debt service payment. So any lease, including vehicles, if we lease any space, and then also what are called, the acronym is S B I T A's. Subscription-based I T assets are considered a lease. So all of these subscription-based softwares that we buy are now accounted for like a lease, and there's a debt service component to that, so that's why that's up. Capital projects, up seven million. This is kind of a odd accounting one to explain. Obviously, we have some carryover of projects that makes up a couple million, but the bulk of it is that ARPA money for the landing project. That was originally budgeted in the Splash Landing Fund, which is an enterprise fund. Enterprise funds are accounted for on the accrual, full accrual accounting basis. So we don't actually, while we account for the cash flow of the projects, we don't actually account for the capital expenditure in the budget. By moving those to the ARPA fund on the advice of our auditors, so we spend the ARPA money out of the ARPA fund, so five and a half million dollars that was planned for in the Splash Landing Fund was spent out of the ARPA fund. That is a governmental-type fund, accounted for a little bit differently on the modified accrual basis where we do budget for capital projects. So five and a half million dollars of that seven point one million is just that maneuver alone. Not an increase in projects, just a differentiation in how we account for them in different funds. In the business-type areas, which include all of our utility funds, our amenities such as the Family Museum, Palmer Hills, Transit, that's up about two point three million. A big portion of that is actually depreciation in the sewer fund and the stormwater fund. Depreciation is a non-cash expenditure. It's the, it's how we account for the cost of a capital asset over the life of that asset. And we added a bunch of new assets at the end of last year that increased our depreciation in future years. And we also see some increased costs in the risk fund, or the liability insurance and the health insurance fund. I want to spend a little time talking about transfers. We do this. We touch on this during the budget, and maybe we don't dig into it enough. The majority of transfers between funds in any given year are just a part of our normal process. Things like the transfer of property taxes from the general fund to the transit fund. Well, you'll remember there's a transit levy. We levy taxes to support the transit operation. Those are received in the general fund and then transferred to the transit fund. So you will see in the column labeled general fund, a transfer to transit of four hundred and six thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That is simply the transfer of those transit property taxes levied to the transit fund. Other regular-type transfers, if we issue bonds to buy fire equipment, which is not unusual. A fire truck typically lasts twenty to twenty-five years. They are one of the rare pieces of equipment that we can actually issue bonds for. Those bonds are received in the capital projects fund, but expended in the vehicle replacement fund. So we need to move that portion of the bonds to the vehicle fund. Sales tax revenue transfers. You'll remember that sixty percent of our sale, local option sales tax goes to property tax reduction in the general fund. The other forty percent is received in its own fund to fund capital projects and capital equipment purchases. Well, we don't spend the money in that fund. We spend it where it belongs, maybe in the C I P, at Palmer Hills, at the Family Museum. So the far right column, you'll see transfers from sales tax revenue to those various funds for capital-related costs. And then we do some transfers to support operations from both the general fund and the gaming fund, operations like the Family Museum, Palmer Hills, those types of things. Now, there are some transfers in the table that are less regular, regularly done, completed for any number of reasons, and always with the approval of council. Some examples here in this table for this year, a general fund transfer from the general fund to vehicle. We've experienced an interesting time in the vehicle replacement fund. While costs are rising drastically, we've talked about that during the budget, and also lead times to get these vehicles is, seems to be moving further and further out. Two in three years is not unusual. We are actually going to spend less in the vehicle replacement fund this year than we had planned to. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. But it just, it's not because we've purchased or ordered less vehicles. There are many vehicles on order, many of which will be received in F Y twenty-five, some in F Y twenty-six. The general fund is in a very strong position with some of that extra sales tax revenue and revenue that's a little bit more discretion. And it was our recommendation at budget time that we move five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the vehicle fund to kind of even out the fund balance for that fund over the next couple of years as those ordered vehicles start to be received and paid for. Another kind of unusual transfer in the current year, sorry, I'm just looking at my notes. We have a transfer from the drug seizure fund, about five columns in from the left, to I T. In the middle of the year, council approved the purchase of the Omnigo Evidence, digital evidence software, which police is really, really thankful to have as far as I know. I'd let the chief speak to that, but part of our mid-year funding of that purchase was to take thirty thousand dollars from drug seizure and move it to the I T fund where that purchase was made. We've also got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars moving from the Hendrix Gift Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. The Hendrix Gift Fund was a gift specifically to the Parks Department to purchase parks, equipment, playgrounds, shelters, that kind of thing. It's sat pretty much earning interest for my entire career here. I don't know that we've ever spent any money out of that fund. And to free up some sales tax dollars that would typically fund those types of projects, we wanted to free up some sales tax for other projects. So we thought a good use of that Hendrix money would be to supplement the playgrounds and shelters project within the C I P. And that's a, again, a one-time transfer, kind of unusual. Let me see if there's any others worth noting. We do have the transfer of SMID revenue to the Bridges Tiff. This is kind of a one-off weird situation within the SMID where the portion, the increment above the base value for the Bridges Lofts is subject to Tiff rebate, even, even the SMID taxes are. So the SMID tax is received in the SMID fund. We take that little bit portion of the increment and make it part of the rebate back to the Bridges Lofts Tiff. So that's kind of a unusual transfer there. Any questions so far?
Greg, Jay.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the Hendrix Gift Fund, how does that decision-making process get made? I don't remember in the budget discussions that we talked about it. Maybe we did, and I've forgotten it.
I, I'm pretty sure we did. There's a lot happening at budget time, and we might have moved past it pretty quickly. This was a, there were a number of projects coming in at that time, mid-year projects, parks-related projects, family museum-related projects that require sales tax funding. We can't, you know, fund those types of projects with other money. And in an effort to free up some sales tax revenue for those projects, I think it was suggested that, you know, that we have this Hendrix funding sitting here for playground purposes. Let's, let's use it and, and be able to get some other things done.
I just don't remember it, so thank you. I will try and do better. On the vehicle replacement transfers, same question. During the budget process, we articulated that we were going to take five hundred thousand and put it from general fund into vehicle replacement fund. And what was the reserve on the vehicle replacement fund? My recollection is it's more than a million dollars, but.
In the next, we, we project the fund out five years, the best we can. And there's a point in that, in that time where it will be down, I believe, under two hundred thousand dollars, which is a little tight in my, in my, for my comfort level, given what we, what we're experiencing in the, in the vehicle purchasing realm. We probably talked, touched on this transfer when we went through transfers, but again, the focus at budget time is typically on the F Y twenty-five budget. So maybe we didn't give this the attention it deserved for the F Y twenty-four reestimate.
Do we have, does the council have a policy on reserves or fund balances for the various funds that we have?
We do. I don't believe we have such a policy for funds such as the Vehicle Replacement and Technology Fund. It's been kind of my target to keep those at about a five hundred thousand dollar fund balance level.
So it's a dollar amount rather than a percentage of expected costs?
Yes.
Okay. And other funds, same thing? Is it just a policy, an internal policy or a staff position that it ought to be a certain dollar amount, and you try to keep it to that level?
For our more operating-type funds and our enterprise funds, we have a more specific policy. The general fund obviously has the policy of twenty to twenty-five percent plus a ten percent cushion. Road use has a similar policy, but I think we actually added five or ten percent, so it was a thirty to thirty-five plus ten percent, if I remember right. Debt service fund has a, a policy of its own. In the enterprise funds, we're kind of looking at cash balances more than fund balances just because of the change in accounting. So there's some policies around, around that, and we talk about those when setting rates, you know, we're trying to hit a, a target cash amount. I'm sorry. So the policies exist. I'm not sure we've ever explored the idea of doing one for the, the capital replacement funds because they're typically.
I'm just curious how we decide how much money and when. If there's a policy on it, or if it's something that comes to the council, or if it's something staff says, hey, this is what we ought to do, let's do it. I just, I, I'm perfectly comfortable with you guys deciding it. I just want to know how it works.
In a, in a policy, it would certainly be helpful to guide those decisions both at our level and your level. So I'd be happy to, to propose something.
If, if the council considers it great, I, for me, I'm comfortable. I just want to know. So thank you, Jason. Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor, just, just to reiterate on that, the Risk Management Fund, Greg, if you recall, we funded that with five hundred thousand dollars. It's just grown over time as either the attrition of, of time, it grew by interest rate, or we had vehicles that were in, in crashes. We put them, the reimbursement monies in the Risk Management Fund. That, that fund's now at a million, about a million dollars, I think. It's just crept up over the last twenty-five years. We've kind of kept that as a little bit of a cushion because, as you know, because we're self-funded on some of the insurances, and there's a requirement, I think, for a hundred and twenty-five percent of the health fund to be in a reserve. We use that, both the health fund and the Risk Management Fund.
In order to get your reimbursement.
To get the one twenty-five established, so those are two funds that are more based on actuarial expenses versus necessary percentage.
Yeah, Jerry, then Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a question on that SMID transfer. Does that mean we didn't pay the SMID then, the thirty-two thousand that was collected? Or do we have to take it out of our pocket to, to pay the Tiff?
That's a great question. No, we do not then reimburse the, the SMID, the thirty-two. It comes out of their, their, the downtown organization's revenue.
Oh, okay.
Jeff, you have something there?
So then I have a question is, in the next development agreement we have, is it possible for us to put in a clause that says that doesn't happen on a future development?
Jeff, go ahead. Yeah, Your Honor, thank you very much. I can provide a little clarity to this. So first off, yes, and we have done that since, Councilmember Saxon. If you recall, we did the development agreement with the Bridges Lofts in twenty seventeen. In twenty nineteen, the SMID got created. When we did that development agreement, there was no SMID on the horizon per se. As it came forward, and the legal counsel for the developer of the Bridges Apartments looked into this further, he found a nuance in the Iowa code that allows them to have the right or the opportunity to capture their SMID dollars backs as part of their Tiff rebate. So those dollars are dollars that they create and they pay, but they had the right, if you will, to actually get that as part of a Tiff rebate. And Chris and I worked through this with their legal counsel quite a bit. We would be hopeful that they would provide those dollars to the SMID, but by virtue of the fact that this was such a highly invested property by a, a number of investors, it was an expenditure they didn't contemplate at the time of the development agreement. So they're getting their rebate back of those taxes. It's not city money going to them. It's their money going back. It would be nice if it went to the SMID, but it's not. But to your point, since that time, we've had two other development agreements. And the way in which we can curtail this in the future is we're actually putting language in our DAs now that state, if we will do a DA with you, you will contribute to the SMID and not have access to that rebate. So I think we're in a good position moving forward.
Okay, very good. Second question is, that sixty-seven thousand for Splash Landing, I understand that's for insurance?
It's a, a mix of both insurance and actually I T charges. I went back and double-checked that. But the bulk of it is the liability insurance that we hold on the property, so.
Okay, because I was going to ask, we already require the construction contractor to carry liability insurance during construction. And since the pool's not even going to be open this year, do we need to carry liability insurance on the pool for this year?
I believe it was.
And then next year, when the pool is open, we have a clause in the, in the twenty-eighty-eight agreement that says the Y has to carry insurance.
Yeah, this, this is unique compared to any other project because it's a building project, so that's actually a builder's risk policy. So that protects us during construction. It's separated something that any commercial project of this scale basically always, the owner provides that. It covers them. The contractor has their own. There, there's always the potential for a gap between that, so that is specific only to construction.
Okay, thank you.
Frank? Thank you, Your Honor. Jason, one more time on the vehicles, if you could. Okay, the fire truck, three years out.
Yeah.
Okay. We're locked in at that price now, right? And they cannot, they cannot raise that price.
That's my understanding. We've, we've seen surcharges on other vehicles in the past to get, you know, increased prices, but I'm pretty sure those contracts are.
I hope we have it in writing anyway.
Yes.
And do we, we don't have to make any payments during that three-year period. But do we set any money aside towards that final bill yearly for the next three years to make that payment?
Well, that's a great example. You have a fire truck on order right now to be received in F Y twenty-five. It's a, I believe, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the budget. And we actually, that was part of our bond sale that we did in March, so that money is sitting in reserve, ready to make that purchase. The vehicle fund itself is kind of funded as needed from largely sales tax revenue. So, and, and that's why I, we try to normalize the expenditures and then also normalize transfers to the fund and the fund balance in the fund to handle that. What's really, golly, what's really kind of thrown us for a loop is these delays because we're ordering vehicles, we're budgeting for vehicles, and then actually not paying for them sometimes for three, even four years. So kind of planning that five-year plan in the fund has gotten a little bit more complicated than I, than it has been in the past. So, you know, nothing, nothing we won't figure out, but it's, it's just a little more, a little more complicated.
I got all the faith in the world in you, but I just had to ask.
Jerry, you got another question?
A follow-up on that. So then we're actually paying for that fire truck with, with debt service dollars as opposed to using sales tax dollars.
Right. It would, the, the fire trucks are such an expense, it would deplete our sales tax flexibility for other projects all around town, other vehicles, other C I P projects. You know, that sales tax is, there's many hands in the sales tax cookie jar.
But then that fire truck is actually costing us a lot more than we say that it's costing us because we've got twenty years of interest charges.
That's true. That, that has been our practice.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. All right, gentlemen, thank you, move it on.
Um, I will just real quickly, um, the last page of slides shows fund balances in some key funds. I will forward you guys the the fund balance policy just as a as a reminder, and then the last couple of pages, uh, there was a request from council to see how vehicles were budgeted in the adopted budget versus how they're actually coming in. Uh, I have done my best to put that summary uh right here. Again, the delays in purchasing these things, there's a lot of carryover, there's a lot of there's a lot of carryover from previous years, there's a lot of pushing budgeted items to future years just because of these delays, so. If you have any questions, please let me know. And I'm happy to go through this in a little bit more detail, but that is my summary on budget amendments.
Questions on any of those vehicles there?
Yep, Greg, Jager.
Very quickly, your honor, just to pick one, the ERU armored vehicle. Adopted budget zero, actual two thirty-eight, what you're saying is that in last year's budget, we agreed we were going to spend two thirty-eight, didn't happen, and so now it's being billed into this year, right?
And that is, that's exactly right, that's a good example to pick too, because that was that was actually not in the original FY twenty-three budget, that was brought in in the amended budget for FY twenty-three. When that opportunity came up in the middle of the year. The money wasn't spent in FY twenty-three, uh, the the vehicle was delivered, I think, in October of of this fiscal year, so here's the amendment to correct it for this year.
None of the fund balance transferred from general fund over to vehicle is because of any of this, this is simply accounting from last year into this year.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Jerry?
Uh, follow-up on that then. Looking at the police department and the leased vehicles in the police department. When I look at the invoices that we get every every two weeks to approve, it shows a cost to enterprise for principal and a cost to enterprise for interest.
Yep.
What what is that, is, I mean, so this this number here, that's thirteen thousand, six hundred and eight for one of the vehicles, does that include both the principal and the interest?
Right, um, these are capital leases, at the end of three years, we will own these vehicles uh and can choose what to do with them, we can keep them, or we can let enterprise do their thing and and keep rolling. So the principal is obviously the the principal cost of the vehicle. And then there's an interest component to the to this type of financing, so. Again, part of that new accounting around leases, so you're account you're accounting for it like debt service.
Thank you.
Other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Jason, would you move your mic between you, just in case, so Brett?
So those amendments will appear on tomorrow night's agenda as items seven and eight. We move to our presentation on the CIP.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Brett.
We'll be able to tell there's a reason I had Jason go first, because a lot of what he just explained, um, he did obviously a much better job than I would be able to. For our May CIP amendments, the biggest item I wanted to touch on was simply that our approved CIP versus the amended are significantly close to each other, which is obviously a good thing. So our initial approved CIP, when I look back uh through our spreadsheet, was right about nineteen point two five million. And our amended is nineteen point five seven five million. Now, when you take into effect uh what Jason had mentioned, a couple of the larger projects, so the backloaded Forest Grove expenditures, for example, not that the projects have cost anymore, both of those projects are actually under budget, but the money was delayed from our initial estimates, so you could have probably close to a million, maybe a million and a half in difference on those two projects. You add that in, and you look at then our net from this spreadsheet that you can see, um, if you could bring that up on the screen, please. Thank you, uh, the one that we've been running that shows that we are, you know, roughly four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the good on the projects that we've bid out so far this year, and you can see that's why those numbers from the original to the amended are so close. You know, the biggest thing to keep in mind there, uh, Jason did a, I guess, a much better job explaining it, but, you know, we operate from a construction end on a calendar year basis. Obviously, CIP is done in uh July first, and so when we estimate those six-month increments, there's times I'm estimating out six, twelve, sometimes even eighteen months out. And I'm looking at a project and saying, I anticipate spending forty percent of the budget in first half of the fiscal year, or thirty percent in the back half. When those change, and they inevitably change, um, you know, some of our programs, we're pretty good about it, we know our full debt patch, somebody's going to jump in and they're going to spend about half that money in the first fiscal year, it's easy. You get large, complex projects, especially like Forest Grove and Middle, um, and those estimates go out the window pretty quick, unfortunately, so that's where these amendments really will tell you where you're at, but that's also why they're very important, because those expenditures do float quite often, um, over the course of, you know, one, sometimes two construction seasons. But for our current ones, there are no major changes, which is all I really wanted to convey um for the current fiscal year. We do have two or three kind of major projects left, I would say, that are to bid, um, so we do have some minor budget amendments. But again, if you you look at the spreadsheets in front of you, then we talked about this probably six weeks, eight weeks ago. We were about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the good. Devil's Glen widening is probably the largest remaining project yet to be bid this year, uh, that had an initial five hundred thousand dollar estimate with it. We're looking at about six to fifty, we think now, um, a couple of reasons for that, we've actually extended the limit slightly. Getting a little more paving done, there were some logical stop-starts as we uh went through the design that were not available, um, when we did the initial estimates. And then we're also, as part of that project, building both the turn lane that was required for the Highland Ridge uh project. So the Devil's Glen and Forest Grove, the commercial and townhome development on the southwest corner. If you remember, they were required to build a left-hand turn lane in there, so since we're going to be in with the project, we're going to build it as part of our project and bill them back. We're actually going to build their entrance too, that way everything is done, they have a nice, clean point to start their paving. I had the developer in last week just to confirm everything, um, that's all kosher with them. So there was a little bit of that increase, and when you see the amended CIP, you can see there's a dedicated line item for developer reimbursement, so that one did go up a little bit. Palmer Hills parking lot and driveway, the resurfacing project that we have planned for this year went up about seventy-five thousand dollars, and the reason I wanted to mention that one, because that is funded through sales tax. One of the challenges that we're running into is how to do that work and keep the course still open. So we know we can do the parking lots in chunks and should not, as long as we stage around, you know, any decent-sized event, we we should have minimal impact there. The driveway is really the the issue we're having, so what we had planned to try to do was do that as some night work. Unfortunately, when we talked to our asphalt contractors, they said it's not a large enough project that they could justify getting an asphalt plant to stay open for them. You know, when you see night work down the interstate, they're doing thousands of tons, we're doing a couple hundred here. So what we're going to look at doing is, we're going to do the parking lots as the the overlay in asphalt like we planned. But when we shut down to replace that driveway culvert that we've talked about, um, the entrance culvert, we're just going to go ahead and we're going to rebuild the driveway in concrete, that way we don't ever have to worry about it, we can do that in colder temperatures uh near the end of the year, when it extended, you know, whether it be probably seven to ten total day closure. We'd like to keep it at five, but it might have to go a a couple days further. But then we're also getting a a brand-new driveway out of that, uh, we were going to have to build new concrete curb and gutter, and then try to deal with the existing asphalt in between it, really wasn't working out, so this is what we're proposing to change there, so that did add a a small amount to that budget.
Brett, we're not seeing, maybe there's a page two for that?
No, no, so these are just, I just wanted to give you a verbal, this is just the projects that have been updated. And then Forest Grove and Middle, like we talked about, um, you know, some of the major expenditures, basically a lot of the paving was backloaded. But just to make sure everyone's rest assured that while we're talking about the expenditures changing, the overall budgets have not. We're approximately four, maybe four hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget on the Valley contract, and around a hundred and fifty thousand estimated under budget on the NJ Miller contract. So both projects coming in significantly under budget, but again, the expenditures were backloaded on the the back end of the project. One major change that you'll be seeing in twenty twenty-five that I did want to make you aware of, obviously, the twenty twenty-five construction projects, we will talk about this fall when we go into budgets, but one item that's a fairly sizable amount that I don't think we can put off any longer is going to be the Fifty-third Avenue Bridge over uh Crow Creek, so just east of Devil's Glen, uh, our plastic bridge, if you want to, everybody nods. Way to say that, um, unfortunately, the, so for those that don't remember, there are three separate spans uh as part of that bridge. The two western, so the west and then the center, um, spans are standard precast concrete. They've got a concrete deck, but they've got, one has the standard steel bars, the epoxy-coated bars. One span has the plastic bars, the fiber reinforced polymer, the FRP. And then the third span was the, uh, really the experimental span, that is the one that has FRP deck panels. It was the first in the country that had ever done it, uh, built in two thousand and three, and unfortunately, those are basically completely failed at this point. We're filling that thing full of asphalt just to keep traffic moving it over it. They've been delaminating for years, the initial, uh, and I believe it was just about two years after it opened, DOT did a a large inspection on it as addition to our MBIS, and we were already seeing cracking, unfortunately, with that thin overlay deck, so it's 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 held on for as long as possible, but that does need to be replaced, and we will just replace it with a standard concrete deck, but that's about a six hundred thousand dollar expenditure that will be asking to come into the budget for twenty twenty-five.
Questions then for Brett? Yes, Frank? Pavement marking.
Yes, sir.
There was some discussion that we were going to do it twice this year?
Yes, we did move that into a twice-year contract, so.
That is a go.
Yes, so the initial, they started work about a week ago.
Yep.
So they will do everything, all lines and symbols uh will be done with this spring application, and then the fall application will just be arterials and the long lines, uh, so we won't come back and do the symbols twice, those generally don't need it, it's the the center lines and your double yellows.
Same same paint, just doing it twice?
Correct.
Other questions, Greg Jager, and then Greg Adams.
Thank you, your honor, guys, I apologize, I have very little financial stuff, my accounting was terrible, so I just got to ask. I don't understand what net budget to GO fund balance means.
Sure, so the reason I put that in, Greg, was that some of these projects, um, and I probably should have explained that when we put this together originally, is they have multiple funding sources. So if you look at the street resurfacing program, for example, the fourth one down, it's got a PW number, generally when you see PW in front of it, that's GO funding. That also has a road use supplement. So I wanted to show really the GO money is what, you know, I think the concern was, is that bonded money, what are we doing with it? So that is, I I specifically identified that in terms of the running value there, so that was the money that you know, we started with that first project right off the bat, Eighteenth Street Reconstruction had three hundred thousand dollars, um, in excess budget funds. So I started at zero, and then that's the GO bond net amount, as projects continued to come in under, I just showed it shifting into that column.
So if a project come, if project's a million-dollar project, it comes in at nine hundred thousand, the hundred thousand dollars that you had originally budgeted, you're saying that hundred thousand is through whatever mechanism going to go back into the general fund when all is said and done?
Not the general fund, the the GO fund, so we we have a capital of four hundred.
General Obligation Bond Fund.
Yes.
So it stays in with other bond proceeds and simply builds the bond proceeds fund balance.
Correct, and that and that fund balance is really important to us because of what we just talked about in the way projects stage out. So we can project out that, and if that money hit exactly when it was going to, we could probably keep a fairly low GO fund balance, but the fact that they vary so much means we need to have that ability to adjust to the varying cash flows that are coming in.
Given consent F later on in in the discussion.
Yep, exactly.
So your GO fund balance is simply held in reserve, and there's no no council policy on how much should be in it or out of it, it's simply an accumulation of funds that have been built up because other projects were under budget, basically. Or weren't weren't, costs were not incurred within the calendar, the fiscal year.
Yes, uh, it builds up in the four hundred capital projects fund. That's where we, that's where projects expenditures take place, that's where bond proceeds are deposited.
So when staff says, hey, we've we need another hundred grand, there's a hundred grand sitting in, the GO fund balance, generally, that's where you're taking it from.
Correct, it's, it, what happens is it it can either be used for other or additional projects, or it can be used to reduce our GO bond need next year, right? The way that, because of the CIP construction year versus fiscal year, this is why I have so much gray hair now.
You should have got hair.
Because of the way construction year plays with the fiscal year, we're really trying to anticipate and and plan for a certain amount of cash flow in that CIP fund. And that's what drives our bonding decision, and so anything that's left over, if if there is any left over, just reduces the amount of bonds we need next year, or could be used to add new projects, or or, you know, we've been lucky this year.
And all and all that gets discussed when the council gets together with staff in October?
For CIP? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay, great, and then just a general question, of all the projects that are currently outstanding budgeted for this year, budgeted for last year, now getting finished up, are there any projects that are X dollars above where we thought they would be, or Y dollars below where we thought they would be? In other words, did we find a project with good savings and hooray for us? Do we have any projects that we're worried about, and uh-oh, we got to find money?
Sure, thankfully, uh, the second part of your question, no, we do not have any that are over budget. I take a lot of pride in what our staff does and and do a very good job of of managing those projects, that's also partly why we ask for those contingencies, to make sure we, when something does come up, that we can address it. The two big ones are the Forest Grove and Middle projects that do have some significant um underruns in them projected right now, we're still, we have not closed those out, we, as you're probably aware, we just finished up construction there. My thought being that specifically the Phase Four, which was basically everything east of Middle. So that had an overall budget, which you'll see in the, um, yeah, consent F, had an overall budget of seven million dollars, now that incorporated into three separate construction contracts. Because we were moving at light speed, there was a one point two million dollar and change sanitary and storm sewer project, there was the construction of Competition Drive, that was about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Then there was the NJ Miller contract, the the Phase Four contract, so basically Forest Grove east of Middle. And then there's engineering fees in that, and uh, design fees, construction administration, that's looking like the total corridor, if you want to call that, um, will be about a million, million-one under budget. So that is why I have that listed under consent F, that I would like council's approval to. I guess it's not even asking for approval on this one specifically, because we do have sufficient budget right now for the amendment when we get to the the Ped Bridge, but it's the overall Ped Bridge project
Cost.
that we're anticipating, again, these are all estimated costs still, so that's a a good example of one.
In the the big scheme of things, if we did nothing, the money that you saved would simply go into the GO fund balance, and then you would come to council and say, hey, we need more money, let's pull it out of the GO fund balance, as long as council says you're within the right parameters, you're not using essential for general corporate purpose, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, this fall, we would we would like to amend that budget, exactly, because that'll be one that rolls for, you know, probably two construction seasons.
I think I'm learning, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Greg, eh?
Thank you, your honor. Just a quick question, the alley rehabilitation program?
Yes.
How close are we, not seeing that anymore?
Two more years after this, so twenty-five and twenty-six, uh, and then we would no longer need, we would take a pause at least on the asphalt alleys after twenty-six.
Then would they just then just go right in with the normal street, so we check it every once in a while, and
Most likely they would.
Would be any difference between alleys and streets?
Probably get rolled into a resurfacing program in the future, that's the beauty of of how we're rebuilding them.
Okay.
We do have some concrete alleys that we'll have to look at, but yes, that is.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Yes, Jerry then Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. So on a project you were just talking about re uh street resurfacing, where you've got a mix of uh road use money and geo money.
Yeah.
You use up a hundred percent of the road use money, right?
That's why, exactly, that's why I have the the geo column, cause um and you can see that uh in the notes, but yeah, the intent is always to use up either the road use or the enterprise fund money, so if it's storm or sanitary uh first, and then carry over any excess geo money. Cause we have more flexibility with that.
Yep, thank you.
Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh on the Criswell Rehabilitation, is the figures that I see there. My understanding is that that road is half ours and half the county's.
Correct.
Is that just our half, and the county's gonna come up with another million too?
No, that is total project cost, they will reimburse us.
They reimburse us.
We already have an agreement with them, i- it'll probably be in their upcoming fiscal year. Um because we've got a few other small projects that they have done recently uh on some of our shared borders, where we'll have a few um contributions to them. So we'll net out an amount, they're still probably gonna owe us four or five hundred thousand.
And that's gonna be from uh Forest Grove Drive all the way down to Valley Drive?
That is the entire length, correct.
And that will be drainage and the whole nine yards, just like uh Forest Grove was out by the school?
Uh yes, so that, um but in terms of drainage, we're just replacing the existing culverts um in in kind. We're not doing any additional storm sewer or curb and gutter at this point. That's a about a nine to eleven million dollar project, but yes, the the full depth reclamation will look exactly like Forest Grove did.
Thank you.
Brent, you might wanna take an opportunity to tell the council about the total delay or total shutdown of Forest Grove and Criswell.
Sure, the staging that's gonna be coming out, Angie's working on that uh probably as we sit here. So there will be a mayor's message about that this Friday, we're gonna talk about the the project. The initial phase, so we have three culverts that come from all three directions at Forest Grove and Middle. And they meet directly under that intersection and.
Forest Grove and Criswell.
I'm sorry, yes, Forest Grove and Criswell, thank you. Um and they are starting to fail rapidly, we need to replace them completely, they're old uh corrugated metal pipe. So to do so, we have to shut that entire intersection, now we're gonna stage it um because we've got multiple things we're working around. One being school traffic, obviously, um you know, I think there's twelve to fourteen buses a day that utilize Forest Grove uh and head out to Leclerc uh in the county, and then also the county has two bridges on Wells Ferry, one being uh on Wells Ferry just south of I eighty that they are replacing this year. That construction is set to start at the end of June, and the detour routes will be Forest Grove, uh at least for that north bridge. So, starting the twenty seventh, contractor's gonna come in, they're gonna close Criswell south of Forest Grove. Forest Grove will still be open for that period of time, um but Criswell itself will be detoured up to Hopewell. That work will take five, maybe six days, um so they can get their work their way into the intersection. And then for, we're anticipating a four day closure right now, maybe five, but we told them that's the max they'll get. Where we have to close the entire intersection and detour traffic out to um out to Indiana, so we can finish the remainder of that storm sewer work. That will be after school is out, however, um or very close to, maybe a day tops. We've already been coordinating with uh Dr. Struess and his team. And then all the remainder traffic control, um not the easiest thing to explain, but uh well, there's gonna be a lot of rolling closures um because of the culverts, so every time they replace a culvert, it's gonna take two to three days, and depending on the location, residents may have to go south or north, depending on where they live relative to that culvert. There will be instructional signage at every cross street on Criswell to help residents understand that, cause it it will change sometimes overnight, depending on if they finish one and ready to move on to another.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. We move on to our consent agenda items, the first one is Consent E, Ryan Schmidt and Brett Morlock.
All right, well, I'm gonna give you an update on the landing, um I know most of you have probably seen most of these images, I'll move through them pretty quick. Um and then really wanting to get down to the ice component, so Consent E um is a change order asking basically for the formal inclusion of the ice rink and its components to be added to GCI's contract. Remember some of the renderings for the buildings, these were the uh based off our final material selections? That's interesting. Let's back up here. Tell you what. Was working. All right, well, that's loading, uh we'll talk real quick on um the dollars themselves. So the original contract that was bid uh almost just over a year ago was for a total, total purchase order was issued at nineteen point six million. So that included uh eighteen million for the aquatic facilities uh that are split between various parties. Uh and then about one point six million for some of the buildings that were gonna be dedicated to ice but needed to be built at the same time. Um so if I can ever get this back up, uh you'll remember right at the corner, uh or I should say the center of the site. If you've been out there driven by, you've seen the the big block building that's going up right now, so that's Building A. That is our restroom facility, but that uh and shower facility. The west half of that building is also Zamboni Storage and Ice Storage, so a portion of that building was allocated towards the uh ice budget and a portion towards the um towards the aquatic budget. The building just south of there, which we're calling Building B, um that is the ice rink warming house concession stand, skate rental, it's it's our main building. That is a hundred percent ice, but again, needed to be built at the same time uh as the um aquatic facilities, so that way we could operate when we were hoping to be able to open this season um in a a safe and efficient manner. So now that that portion has already been allocated, we're coming back and looking to add in the rink itself. The electrical that goes with it, um all the the concrete work, um site furnishings, there's some fire pits and uh some pergola structures, we can get in there fencing, that kinda stuff, um that is all being added into this change order. This is not cooperating, so really hoping to be able to show you guys this. Okay, there we go. So we'll breathe through, so these are some of the interiors of the buildings, not sure if you saw this, this is the administration building, this is the building that the city and the Y will share. It's mostly pool, um but it will also serve as admissions for ice, so it is um Building C that you will see. Um this is the community building, Building B that we talked about, that will serve as the the warming house, really the main focus, there's some interior renderings. You can see the the concession area here. Large fireplace, fireplace, lots of glass. Okay, so here's the kind of the front entry as you come in, so this building that you see here, this is the the ice building. And you can see with the proximity of all these buildings, there was a reason that we really needed to to construct them all at once. Plus, we wanted to buy the materials, make sure everything looked consistent. So you will come up, these are operable windows, they will take admissions, go through, uh the fencing system opens up, and then you're into the complex. Couple of the renderings with some on the ice side, you can see that building in the back, this is about the split where you're all restroom in here, and you're all ice components and storage and Zamboni there. Pool side, um these, the gate systems, the fencing allows us to um if we ever wanted to, if we wanted to open the ice side during the summer, um for the wide uses overflow, um or if we don't want to, we can separate and isolate those two, so that way you can operate one half facility, one half, uh or the one, or the entire facility at the same time, and those are the lockers that you see there. Couple more renderings. There's your slides that you will be seeing in about ten days, uh construction will will start, if you take a drive up into the um the old Life Fitness Center parking lot, you can actually see some of the orange slides have started to be assembled in the back parking lot. Those are the ones that are here so far, we know the rest are coming and they're scheduled, I think, June third, and they'll be here for twenty days to do erection of the the tower itself plus installation of all the slides. That's the play structure, um that has also started, the uh the splash deck, they started work on that just last week. Um you can start to see the outline of that happening, uh there's some of the familiar aerial renderings. See all the structures there, we'll get through. Okay, um these are a little more ice specific, I've seen some of these, okay. A few of the updated renderings, so basically everything from the front of this building and this concrete in is what's included in this change order. So that's, like I said, the rink, the railing system, um the trellis systems, the fire pits, the concrete. You know, one question that was asked specifically was about, uh as we've been doing this, was about the interior railing system here. So the concrete slab that will have the permanent uh refrigerant installed, so you know, if you remember how the you know, the temporary rink was set up, uh we had to roll the the lines out and use the styrofoam to level, um you know, assemble everything, put it all down. Everything will be in the slab, so it's permanent insulation, that slab is continuous, so there will actually be refrigerant under here. So we do have the ability, and the the railing systems are all about six foot in length and and have uh grommets that are built into the concrete. So they can, they sleeve in, they come out as a a whole section. So if we ever wanted to not put that up for a season, um there's been talk, if somebody uh has mentioned uh curling, if we ever wanted to try it. This could be one continuous sheet of ice, or you can put the interior railing system in, been talking of putting the Christmas tree there as many, but it's it's very flexible. It was specifically designed as such.
So the blue and the white, there's not a dip? Where the blue and the white is, there's not a?
Correct, don't, they were just showing, that'll be one consistent, um actually, one full continuous slab of concrete. Uh all you would have are the the little sleeves that all have a brass plug that can be placed in them. A few more of the renderings. Thought this was kind of a cool one, they prepared with the both the ice in in summer. So, back to the the total overall budget, um so the change order from GCI for the the remaining work is just shy of two point six million. Asking for a a small contingency, um we may have some soils that we have to deal with on the, under the rink itself. Given the very tight tolerances, we may need to add some additional rock or do some stabilization, so wanted to make sure we had that covered. So that would put our budget, the total project budget is four point six million, that's approved. We will be just under that, about four point four million with this, but there are also some city uh owner furnished items that we have to do. There's some furniture that needs to be for the building, and a couple of other things are outside the contract, but again, we are still on track to be at the original approved budget. Very nice.
Frank?
Are we gonna fill the pool before the?
Yes.
And make sure everything's good to go for the following season?
Absolutely, the intent is to fill it sometime late this summer, early fall. It's already been blasted, they've done some of the the touch up work in there, working through with the state on if we're gonna have any permitting issues if we do that, and then don't open till next spring, so, but yes, that is the intent.
And then secondly, this is quite a difference from our old pool, are we going to maintain it ourselves? Or are we gonna have a contract with some plumbing firm in the Quad Cities to oversee it?
Pool itself would be the responsibility of the Y for the the day to day um maintenance, according to that twenty eighty agreement.
Yeah, I I was referring more to the mechanical on the plumbing end of it.
Uh uh again, that'll be, so they actually do have some staff that handles that internally, because they've got several pools um that they do, they've got a uh a maintenance guy that actually sat in on all of our original design. And ultimately, that'll be up to the to the Y.
But the rink will be open this year?
Yes, the rink is intended to be opened uh the completion date of just before Thanksgiving this year.
Other questions? Yes, Lisa?
Side question, I walked out and around this weekend, did we move all but programming for the ball fields just out to Car Creek for the kids?
They moved it, they moved it to a variety of places, the only, it was just the Lowry Field, just one field.
Yeah, okay, okay, I was just thinking of that.
Yep, anything else? All right, like I then would like to entertain a motion to uh have this remain on consent agenda tomorrow night is Consent E.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow night, let's move to Consent F.
All right, also, give you a quick update on where we stand with the kind of preliminary design of the bridge, got a few more updated renderings. Okay, so this is the overall project map. Okay, you've got a lot going on here, I understand, um we've got all the anticipated or approved site plans that are kinda overlaid on this, as well as the uh new interchange configuration, so we can really understand where everything sits. This line right here and here is the bridge and the elevated trail sections. So the bridge itself will obviously just span Middle Road. As you go east, uh we've got a short section that uh is gonna be spanned over their detention basin that is right there. Turn right this corner, and then this backside, because of the location of of where we had to land the bridge. There's some piers and elevated trail section through here, and then we get back onto grade, kind of at the northeast corner of the soccer fields over there. Um the green trails are what are already constructed, sorry about this, big file. Either public or private, um you can see a few that they probably need to change colors to show that those are private. The brown beige color are some of the additional trail connections that are gonna be made to make sure that we've got full connectivity through the properties back to public trails, um not much that needs to be done on the east side, we're actually built to about here right now. And this little piece, the the letdown and tie down, um will be done with the bridge, we're hoping to get an early trails package out this fall, we're working with TBK to figure out when their uh their least busy time would be, cause we're gonna have some impacts to the two grass soccer fields. So the big piece of trail is gonna run parallel to their parking lot here, and will provide a connection back down to competition. And then that'll provide that direct connection to the bridge that ultimately will take you, you know, right to the front door of Iron T and the uh the new sports building.
And then Brent, when you showed the the two greens that go north.
Over here.
Yep, the two green are those trails that go up and into the interstate or under?
So uh the ones in blue, actually.
Blue, I called, I called turquoise, I guess.
Yep, so there will be a uh a ten foot trail on the east side of Middle that's being built as part of the DOT project, and then they're gonna grade out for potentially, we're, we think we have enough room to grade out for a second ten foot trail if we ever wanted to uh extend, continue the dual trails. Obviously, we assume that the uh northeast corner, because of the ownership group and probably the the sewer ability, will be the first corner to go, so that's why we decided to have the east trail be built first, but there will be room uh on the west side. And if the DOT uh successful with the grant that they submitted here recently, uh we, Jeff and I worked quite a bit with them. So if you remember, that project uh is shown as an underfunded project in the the DOT's five year capital plan, cause they want to, they think it's a competitive project nationally, so they identified four or five, mostly interchanges uh across the state that were slightly underfunded. I should say, probably more than slightly, uh ours was about twenty five million, that was underfunded, about thirty percent of the cost. Cedar Rapids, Wright Brothers uh on three eighty was the first one that they had had identified, and they went out and they were successful, got a fifty five million dollar grant to help accomplish that project, uh so they're asking for about thirty five million for our project, um same bucket of money, which is well over two billion, I think that's that's out there right now. We did work with them to include a couple million dollars in additional. We did work with them to include a couple million dollars in additional enhancements for us as part of that grant request, which could be additional trails, streetscaping, those kind of items. So that, you know, was a good collaborative effort that was put together for that. A few of the kind of isometric views of bridge itself, so there you're crossing Middle Road. You can kind of see we've got some elevated trail because of the terrain. Same thing on the east side here. Another view. Your view from Middle Road, quite the impact.
Is Middle Road going to be four lane with a boulevard?
It'll be exactly what you see. They'll come back and actually cut out some of the concrete that we put in as temporary and start just north of Quick Star. So some of the views, we've got some kind of unique abutments that we had out here. You know, we didn't want a big solid mass of concrete. You can see the, you know, the I seventy four abutment, so they're working on a design that actually turns out to be a little bit of a cost savings as well. Little more form work, but the material savings are pretty substantial. That was the alternative that we didn't really like. This would be a view from either side. So again, you can see the elevated trail section. Still working through on some of the modeling, but it shows the pier and the pier caps. Going to have a kind of a mini overlook. This will be on the east side where we had to change direction, so we needed to add a little bit of maneuverability in that area, and it happens to be over the wet pond for the FG eighty development, so. We'll be working with them. They need to clean that up. It's been used as a temporary sediment basin, but that will be a nice wet pond when construction is all done. Just a quick, this will have some, the abilities, some aesthetic lighting. It's not I seventy four aesthetic lighting, but it is color changing. Actually, the same group, the HLB Lighting Design is who's the subcontractor for here. They're basically the industry standard. And they know our area and they know our network. Do some, most likely you'll have a continuous lighting source on the arch, arch ribs, and then maybe some additional underlighting as well as some lighting on the deck as well. Or rendering, actually this one. So the arch rib itself is almost certainly going to end up white, so that way we can do some color changing. If you don't make it white, you can't get any benefit of the changing. But all the steel substructure will be some shade of as close as we can get to our standard Bet North blue. It's a little hard to see, but you can see it on the outsides of the the rendering there. Just a quick look at the railing system, trying to keep that as minimal as we can to not obstruct the view. Go better idea. So we are fourteen feet wide here, so that's a ten foot clear plus two foot clear zones that you're required to have. There's a updated rendering from their model, starting to throw a few of the background images in there.
Was that brown before? No?
I don't like that white.
It's always white?
Yeah, that one, one rendering was some limestone. It was a much different, that was prior to selection of any of the arches.
Oh, okay.
So part of the contract, and I think Jeff can probably talk to some of the benefits of this, we've already had some requests for it, but HDR is building a full three D model of the corridor out here. So they've taken all the site plans that we have because they've got so much data of what we've done in there and how we wanted to really make sure all the views for the bridge coordinated. You can see this is just a quick screen grab there currently in building that, but you know, we've got the parking lots for what's going to be, actually, we just approved this building, I believe, two weeks ago for Kevin Kellner. You know, this will be the backside of ORA. You can see the current, or actually, this would be the new onramps. Continued streetscaping. Bridge itself. Another rendering, this one is really the really helps you understand the full scale. So they're, so they're building out a model based off all the existing site plans. We've had some requests from, just recently from the Ryan Henson, his ownership group, who's working on the sports building, were asking if we had any idea what the views from I eighty were going to look like, for example, because there's going to be so much grading there and trees coming down and this model is going to, is to scale, so it's the exact three D drawings. The nice part is the, all the developers and architects were willing to share their information with us, so we get the drawings from IRNT, we get the sports building, we get ORA, and we can plug this right into the model and have a nice, consistent full view of everything out here.
Brent, the landing of the bridge, I thought we were going to have like a gathering area, even some green space and stuff like that. Is that not going to happen? It feels like it's a parking lot now.
So there's actually a fair amount of space here, but I think the intent was always that because they're, Kevin's lot configuration out there is you come off, you take your trail section, and this is going to be the gathering space between the buildings, so that's the courtyard area that they're looking to build.
Okay.
If you remember, in some of the renderings for the sports building, there was really a I want to say a tangled wood theme, but an outdoor service area that that was the intent of a straight shot right into that.
Okay.
Okay, so the amendment that that we brought forward. So the initial contract was just preliminary design, about thirty percent design, so this would carry us through final design. Now that we've gone through what they call TS and L, so that's type, size, and location of the bridge. You know, we've confirmed budget numbers. We're still right where we want to be. It's about eight point three million for the bridge and all the elevated trails, and then there's about two million in trail work and then the associated engineering. So that's the total budget. Currently sits at about eleven five. It was a little light, and we've known that since last year. I think I looked back in late fall, I had put together a a full Forest Grove and Middle corridor summary, and it was showing about a million dollar underrun there. Hoping to make it up in two places. One is the Forest Grove Phase Four that we just talked about, that being about a million dollars right there being under budget, that takes care of the majority of it. Also, we were able to get a five hundred and twenty five thousand dollar TASSA grant recently that will cover about sixty percent, maybe seventy percent of the trail extension between Hopewell and Forest Grove on Middle. So that's really a key component of this whole project as well, because that's our gap right now. Driving through the construction daily, riding through construction daily. And now that that's open, you know, we still see people riding on the shoulders of Middle Road, and we know we need to get that trail sooner and later, and thankfully, since we were ahead of the game and have that already basically designed. When we had the TASSA award, we were able to be the first project funded. So we are funded in federal fiscal year twenty five, which starts October of this year. So we will bid that over the winter and start first thing in the spring. Should be a pretty quick project, actually. So that's the kind of the extended version of the budget here. The initial that we have funded currently in the current fiscal year does not need any amendments. We knew we'd be bringing all the full engineering costs. I wanted to bring forward and let you know that where the whole budget sits. I broke that out into a few more pieces in the amended CIP that you'll be able to see just. We ran into, you know, the Forest Grove and Middle had two or three project numbers and became about seven projects. Trying to get ahead of that and try to isolate these earlier on, so we can really from an accounting end, take care of that in a much easier way. There was actually one other drawing I wanted to show you. This was from the DOT. So a really nice perk of the designer that we have designed the bridge is that good friend and a professional colleague of the DOT's head bridge designer, who's designing I eighty in middle, so. We're trying to get as much similarity as we can. We realize they're much, much different bridges and projects, but they're working together, so things like colors, column layouts, the lighting. They're working together, and this would be just a view that you could see, so this would be looking south on Middle as you're coming under eighty, so those would be the new bridges, the clear span. And you can see the, you know, the Pet Bridge lit up in the background.
Would there be signage on the Pet Bridge, like on the decking, the top there?
So what we're thinking, we've looked at a lot of options, so the deck is pretty thin with that kind of structure. Doesn't leave you a lot of opportunity for that. So what we were thinking, let me go back up to the very first page. Is as you come off the interstate either direction, we were thinking these two corners, kind of similar to some of the concepts that were for state and grant originally of some really larger scale entry signage, ground mounted at either of these locations. We've concepted a few things on the bridge and nothing's jumping out yet.
Okay.
We'll continue to work on that, like I said.
Make them readable, like when you get off on I seventy four and downtown Bet North, those columns aren't very bright and you can't read.
Yeah, that.
That didn't work out kind of the way I, I think we envisioned it.
Larger, you know, corner type signage. We had talked about something that was concepted. You know, as you come off, for example, at the northeast corner at Grant and State. This was before my time, but there were some shy of drawings of
Yeah.
You know, a large scale landscaping gateway signage, entry signage there. That's what we're thinking here. I think we could scale back from what was originally proposed, but we would build that as part of that project. If something doesn't jump out as being feasible with this style of bridge. There's always chances on the abutments. We just haven't found anything yet.
Okay. Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we have all of the right of way and easements that we need, or are we going to have a big cost for purchasing?
Nope, nope, so we are right of way, we're good. You know, this is either DOT or stay right of way. Easements, we've already talked to all the property owners, and it's just the Kellner crats. And we're finalizing alignments, and they will sign those. That's no problem.
Very good, thank you.
Other questions? Greg J?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just questions for Jason. The resolution itself simply says the amendment number one is hereby approved. So given the discussion that we're having with the million dollars that's saved from the one project that goes into the GO fund and then comes back out, I assume, to this project. Do you take it at this point that that's what is to be done? That the million dollar savings from the road project is now going to be allocated to this? And do you memorialize it in a budget amendment at some point?
So if I can answer that one, Greg, just to a certain point, this one, we actually have enough currently budgeted in the Pet Bridge project that we don't need to make an amendment. So right now, if you, if you look in the CIP, there's about two million already budgeted for this fiscal year. But in general, Jason, if you could.
Yeah, I think, I think we did do a bonding issue where we had authorized twelve and a half million, and we only bonded for two and a half million, if I recall correctly. So that's the two and a half million that's available, I would assume.
Yes.
So there's no amendment? Or shall we say council action necessary for the current fiscal year ending June thirtieth? I think where council's decision will come in and, to your point, we're kind of putting getting a little bit ahead of it, would be for next year's CIP.
Okay, so.
Amendment to the FY twenty five CIP, which has already been adopted.
The CIP for this project says eleven five. You're now saying, I think we're going to be twelve five. So we're going to need to do a budget amendment next year to add a million dollars to it. We found the million dollars and we've discussed it in May of twenty twenty four, but we're going to do a fiscal year twenty six budget amendment?
So it really would.
Fiscal year twenty five budget amendment, probably in May of twenty twenty five.
It won't end up being an amendment, Greg, because we know now, so it'll just go into a revised CIP number that gets approved for calendar year twenty twenty five.
Well, I guess I'm asking, the budget was set for this project at eleven five. We are now all agreeing the budget for this project is going to be twelve five. When do we acknowledge that? How does that get shown somewhere? That we've increased the budget by a million bucks?
Greg, can I, can I intervene, Your Honor?
Sure.
Would it? It seems to me you're talking about an authorizing document. And perhaps if, if you, the council
Go back and.
Needs it, maybe perhaps what we should do is either a resolution of necessity or some sort of authorizing resolution.
Process. I understand when I got, when I came on board, this project was going to be twelve and a half. That's the way it was given to me in orientation, is that this is now twelve and a half. I'm hearing that it's eleven and a half. We're all agreeing it's going to be twelve and a half. I just want to know the mechanism that says, yeah, it's now twelve and a half.
It's a good question.
And if it's not in a budget amendment this year, and it's not specifically authorized in this resolution, then how do we get to that point? So that come some point in the future, and the budget says it's twelve and a half, everybody says, well, we talked about it, we agreed on it, we, we gave our approval, it's twelve and a half now.
I'd say it's really in the detailed CIP discussions that we have in the fall because most project budgets may change during that period. The programs won't, but as we refine estimates, again, you got to think that a project this large, shown in multiple fiscal years, so as we
It's a lot of money.
That each year that could change. That's really, you know, I would say where the approval comes when you approve the CIP for the coming year.
But let's say something else happens, and now instead of twelve and a half, it's got to be thirteen and a half. Are we saying that we would have a discussion, we say, yeah, it's going to be thirteen and a half, but we're not going to memorialize that until thirteen months down the road? When we do a budget amendment to a CIP line item in a budget amendment in May of the following year?
Yeah, the, the nature of the CIP is, is coun, council's approval is typically of the, of the full budget. The capital and CIP is a portion of that, but in summary form, right? We're not approving in any official document.
Bringing each project forward as they come forward, sure.
So I think the CIP spreadsheet that Brent and I work on and torture you guys with occasionally is really kind of a running living document that's changing as these projects change, as council approves the individual items that come, that come to you. We, and maybe we need to rethink.
I don't know. I've just, I'm trying to think, when somebody says to me, hey, what's A, B, C cost? And I say, well, the budget says that A, B, C costs this amount of money. But we've had an agreement that it's actually going to cost more than that. I just can't point to anything saying we've come to an agreement and here's the new number. And then at some point, somebody says.
I've not bid the job yet either, probably, right?
Really, Greg, I guess the the council resolution approving or awarding whatever contract would potentially put you over budget, I would say is, is the document that is the official approval, so we won't know where we're at till we actually bid it. And yeah, so let's say, let's just say we have a ten million dollar budget, and we didn't expect to go over, but we come in at twelve million for a project.
Yeah.
By virtue of council approving that, in that document, you know, in the council letter, in the budget explanation is where it would state that it was originally budgeted at ten, it's at twelve, here is where we plan to bring the additional funding from.
In olden days, when we had big projects and they came in over budget, engineering would sit down with the contractor and with the outside engineering firm, and they would try to quote unquote, value engineer the project. They'd try to cut the costs of it down. In this process, I don't see an avenue for that, and I just want to understand that that's still something that staff considers very important. If something was eleven five is now twelve five, okay, we're not just making it twelve five. We're also saying we need to look at everything associated with this project to make sure that if it's twelve five, it's a valued engineered twelve five. It's not, we're not just given more money because we got it.
No, absolutely. You know, this one's unique. There's not a lot that you can value out without changing the complete nature of the bridge, but yes, road projects, sewer projects, absolutely.
Building construction is what I recognize as, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the council's indulgence.
Other questions? All right, can I please have a motion that this remain on Consent F tomorrow night?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, let's look at our consent agenda.
Any opposed? All right, let's look at our consent agenda. Uh, Scott's on, but I'll, he'll knock as uh, as needed. Yep. Take a look at the consent agenda. Is there any particular item any council member would like to discuss at this time? Yes, Jerry, then Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item G, which is the next item, uh, then Middle Park sign. The twenty-eight thousand dollars, I assume that's just the cost of the sign. That does not include demo, does not include moving the sculpture, does not include six, seven thousand dollars for landscaping.
So, thank you, Mr. Secher. Um, the, the sign construction is what we're bidding right now, so that'll be the new structure. The landscape removal or demo, if you will, that's gonna be handled in-house. We've already talked to Chris Garmin and our public work staff and Jason Manful about the removal. That's gonna be very minimal, uh, because there's not a lot there right now. And then the sculpture Chris Garmin also has on his schedule to get that removed next week, and that's gonna be stowed and placed at a new point on the campus there. Uh, when the sign comes into play. Uh, landscaping will have to come in as a separate option. Uh, whenever the sign is erected, we have not bid that yet, uh, simply because we wanna get the design and the layout done. And then we'll have the landscape designer and architect for that work come in, do the actual plantings and all of that as well. So this is just to Lang sign for the construction of the sign.
And then the other question is, uh, our packet showed that it's just, it's gonna say Middle Park, correct? We're not gonna have uh Y M C A on that sign.
So, yeah, this is the corner of twenty-third and Middle. The sign is gonna be similar in scope to what we have at Palmer Hills. The sign will say Middle Park and it'll say Bettendorf on it. Uh, it's a city sign. The design elements and signage for the landing area and all that complex are still forthcoming. Uh, we're gonna work with the Y on that one and those signs will be branded as a partnership. Uh, but this is a city of Bettendorf Middle Park sign and Brent and I talked about this with the landscape architect as well for this one. If we tried to list all of the amenities in Middle Park, you know, it's just too cumbersome.
Yep.
So this is simply just to dress up that corner and provide some new aesthetics.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And we do, to to Jeff's point, um, we have, the Y has very specific branding guidelines that they have to follow. Um, so we have a landing logo, um, that is just really the complex itself. That both then the city and the Y's standalone logos will get attached to.
And they'll be a separate sign.
Yep, and that's part of the construction contract, yep.
Okay, good. I think that's the way it should be.
Frank.
Thank you, Your Honor. Could we have Mark go over H for us, please?
Sure, I'd be glad to do that, Your Honor.
Yeah, please, Mark.
So that's the flood buyout program, which I think you're familiar with, down along Parkway, Crestview Court, Crestview Circle, the two cul-de-sacs. That we're kind of building our acreage around. Um, this house is eleven twenty Crestview Court. It was originally appraised during the grant application, cause they make you apply when they make you get the appraisals when you're applying for the grant. And then there is some time period that expires between, or that transpires between the actual applying for the grant and the person being ready to sell their home or or um us being ready to buy their home, as the case may be. And that was about three years in this, in this case. So the law allows, uh, under FEMA, allows them to appeal to the city council, their appraisal. And uh, she's exercised her right to do that here at a hundred and eighty-five thousand versus a hundred and fifty-two, so about a twenty-one percent, twenty-two percent increase in value. Over three and a half, three and a half years.
And Mark, the entire the entire amount is being paid for by the, by the grant?
Yep, this is a hundred percent federally funded. Um, there's no local match. Um, uh, it's eighty-twenty, it's eighty percent federal, twenty percent state. There's no local match a- at all, so. It really kind of fills in the acreage nicely, so we're really being strict on where we're buying homes. That's why we're not buying them maybe as often as we were before, cause we're trying to buy between Parkway and um, uh, the road to the north, uh, which has escaped me, Crestview. Um, and so especially on those cul-de-sacs is where we're really starting to pick up properties and kind of square off an acreage.
Thank you.
Jerry, go ahead.
And if I understand it right, we still have twelve more properties under the current program unless we run out of money?
We were authorized up to, I'm gonna say seventeen or eighteen, eighteen properties this time. Now, as, as has happened in the past, you, you get an authorization for that many properties, but having willing sellers at the time, you're ready to buy. And so we've bought, under this grant, we've bought um, seven homes. This will be our eighth home. And people are coming in, you know, as they're ready, as their life circumstances allow, as their replacement housing is available, which is a big deal. Um, for these people.
Anything else on consent? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that all items remain on consent for consideration tomorrow night.
So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take up our consent agenda as written for tomorrow night. I have no items to add to tomorrow night's agenda. Is there a council person who has something to add to tomorrow night's agenda? Yes, Jerry.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I would like to comment about uh Public Works Day on Saturday. It was a great uh, a great uh, event that Public Works put on. Uh, thank you to Brian and his staff.
Yeah, that was a good time.
Lot of happy kids.
Absolutely.
And awesome recycling truck naming and branding, right, Angie?
Good stuff. All right, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good work. We stand adjourned, people. We'll see you tomorrow.